Let's go ahead and call this meeting of January, not January, of April 24th the order. And we'll start with the roll call.
Thank you. Chair Lane.
Here.
Commissioner Tanelli is excused. Commissioner Sackler.
Here.
Commissioner Lamb.
Here.
Commissioner Lerner.
Here.
All right, there you go. And then we have the public comment section, and there's nobody here right now. If anybody comes, I'll ask them if they want to say something. So we're gonna say that, oh, we're opening and closing the public comment section because there's nobody here. It's officially open and closed, and we'll reopen it if anybody wants to enroll. And then we'll start with the, all the way back to January 23rd minutes. Wow. And I, you know, I was saying, I said this earlier, that I almost went to 3:357 because the agenda's so small, but I flipped the page, and I said, "Well, I probably already approved that." But I didn't realize it was like that.
Yeah, that's okay.
All right, so I need a motion, anything to change on those? I didn't see any.
I don't see any.
Who did remember? All right.
Well, that's why we moved the minutes up to the 2019 as they stand.
All right, you were there on the 23rd. You weren't there on the...
Oh, was I here?
Yeah. Well, you were here physically.
Since, said, somebody's asked me. Wasn't me?
That was, that's the minutes, right?
Yeah, the 23rd is what we're...
Oh, oh, oh. What's this?
Yeah.
It's got your name under present.
I said, "Roll call."
He abstained from...
I abstained because you... I abstained because from the prior...
Prior, yeah.
Okay, okay, okay. Got it? Very good.
So do you...
No, no changes. All right, good.
Yeah, you don't remember being there, but you don't want to change it. All right. Would somebody else like to make the motion?
I'll second. The motion's already been seconded.
I second it. Do you want to make the motion?
You make the motion.
All right, I'll make the motion.
All right, good. And I moved and seconded the two people that remember being here. All of them, all of them say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Or aye. All right, good. All right, then, let's see. So this, there are a couple of things. We changed, and the new items are the discussion of the general plan, I think, is item 4A. I'll just give a little bit of framing before I turn over to staff to talk about it. The, we were going to take an action tonight if we felt, well, we could, but there's been some new proposed revisions that came from a consultant that gave us some environmental feedback that will, that potentially will affect various areas. So the option was to not have this meeting, or to go ahead and have it and sort of get more context study so we sort of get our brains around the whole thing, and then, and then go ahead with whatever changes. Because the changes won't be fundamental to the concept of the plan, if they'll be, they'll be fundamental to the environmental nature. So, and so I'm going to second a little over that. All right, so with that, let's go ahead and start with item 4A, and you can get along and watch it for us.
Thank you. So just piggybacking on Chair Lane's explanation of why we're here tonight is for a discussion of the general plan, and that discussion will be twofold, starting with the associated environmental documentation that has been prepared as required by state law under the California Environmental Quality Act. An initial study was prepared as part of this project, again, the project being defined as a comprehensive update to our general plan, that concluded that any environmental impacts that could potentially result in a negative impact to the environment can be mitigated to a level of insignificance, and we can get into that a bit more. And then, the second part of the discussion tonight is on the actual general plan update itself, the update to the document. So just going back to refresh our memories a bit, we won't belabor this too much. So we started this process of the general plan update with the planning commission in December of 2017, and conducted a series of study sessions throughout the course of 2018, in which staff brought to the commission in a study session format administrative draft updates to each of the elements within the general plan. So we brought you draft elements of land use, circulation, noise, open space and conservation, community safety. The commission provided comments and commentary on each of those elements during the course of those study sessions, and staff took notes and feedback that was received. Post the conclusion of the study sessions, a community-wide workshop was held in February of this year at the park, in which we had about 14 folks from the community show up. There was also a member from the fire board, a couple council members attended as well. The general questions and issues and feedback that we've received from the community, in summary, were not really pertaining to the general plan update itself, but for other townwide matters, and those were addressed. So with that said, the feedback that we received from the community workshop did not warrant any additional amendments or changes to any of the draft elements that you reviewed in your prior study sessions. In terms of the regulation umbrella that we're following under here as it relates to an update to a general plan, state law does require a planning commission to be the reviewing and recommending body on this document, ultimately to the city council for their consideration of adoption. So tonight, we're not asking you to take any action or make any formal vote, but really to take an overview of the associated environmental document as well as the plan itself. If you have any questions, if you have any further suggestions, we have additional time to make edits to the document before we bring it back to you for formal consideration. So that's why we're here and how we got here. So starting with the environmental document, as I mentioned, the update to the plan itself is a defined project under CEQA. As a defined project, then appropriate environmental documentation needs to be prepared. So the way that that determination is made is by completing an initial study. An initial study, if you go to the document here, it is a, I'm going to call it a state mandated checklist that has a series of different topics ranging from aesthetics to hydrology and water quality to geology and soils, and specific template questions within each topic. So as staff, we went in, we answered each of those, call them template questions, under each of those topics, to make a determination if this project, this general plan update, would have no impact to that topic, would have a less insignificant impact, would have a less significant impact if there was mitigation or conditions of approval that were associated, or have potentially significant impacts that couldn't be mitigated. And I mean, I'm happy to get into each of the topics if you'd like, but in summary, the results or conclusions drawn from the preparation of the initial study is that any topics that were identified to have potential significant impacts through implementation of the general plan were also found to be able to be dropped to a level of insignificance with specific mitigation measures addressed. And those topics that were found to have potential environmental impacts related to the topics of air quality, cultural resources, hydrology, water quality, and noise. So all other topics, mineral resources, aesthetics, et cetera, were found to have no impact as a result of implementation of this project. There was an attachment included in the staff report that is part of the environmental document. It's called a mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program. Actually, let me take a step back. The environmental document that is prepared under state law does have required noticing requirements associated with it. For a mitigated negative declaration, the lead agency, that's us, the town, needs to circulate such document for a minimum of 20 days. That 20 days ends today. To date, staff has not received any comments, questions, or otherwise related to the document. So even when the environmental review period closes, you don't have to take action on the document right away. It just means that no more public comment can be submitted on the document that needs to be addressed by us, the town, as lead agency. So, that's why, going back to that mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program, or MMRP, as they are called, was included as a staff report. It's not a requirement as part of the initial study checklist, but it's really a summarized implementation document that takes out all of those mitigation measures that I mentioned, and provides a little bit more specificity in terms of implementation. Tells you what was the impact identified, what's the mitigation, what's the timeframe, what's the timeframe and monitoring sort of milestone that needs to be met to meet that implementation, or excuse me, to meet that mitigation measure, and who the responsible party is to make sure it happens. This, yeah, it's the only physical hard copy attachment that you got to your staff report since we pre-distributed the environmental document and general plan to the commission prior to the packet distribution, and of course, they're available online for the public as well.
Did anybody, did anyone request the documents at all, or no one really?
I did not have one individual contact me in any regard for the environmental document.
Yeah. Most people don't know what they're reading.
They're really great at solving stick-up debates.
They are.
Yeah.
They are.
Although this one reads much better than the Conshoust County one I read years ago. Because I can actually read this one.
Who did this one? Who did this?
I did.
It was really...
You did internally?
Yes, we did internally.
It was really, I mean, it's like a master's thesis.
I didn't see any, anything that showed Powers or anybody else, so I wondered if it would just go straight.
Just the town.
It looks great. It's really fun.
I could actually read all, I read every page, which is very hard to do in the first pass on most...
It's five minutes. I heard five minutes. Is that right?
Yeah. A little bit. I did dig that one, but I didn't, I didn't do this one, not this one. But it's, 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 it's interesting that you can have a plan that actually, when people need to read it, they can actually understand it.
Yes.
Great. Very good.
I'll also give credit to Neil Martin, who's a planning consultant. He teams this with me as well.
Good.
Great.
One more piece that I did want to just overview for this particular environmental document, which is unlike some of the other negative declarations or mitigating negative declarations that the commission has seen, at least in my tenure with you, the only environmental documents that you have seen have been project-related. So there's been a specific project, for example, Sacred Heart School wants to build their academic arts building. There's a project-specific environmental document that goes in and delves into the potential impacts if that project is to be built. This document is not like that. This is because of the nature of our quote "project," which is a long-range implement, implementing, planning document. This is what we call a program-level environmental document, so it creates the umbrella so that down the road, if a project comes in, a specific project on a parcel of land or parcels of land that is subject to environmental review, they can utilize this environmental document as their baseline. The mitigation measures that are recommended to be implemented in this would not be implemented, you know, once this document, if it gets adopted, but would be implemented when a project that falls under the guise of this document comes in, then these mitigation measures would be implemented. So it's, it's a little bit different in terms of implementation and intent than the environmental documents that the commission has seen previously. So that would conclude my conversation points related to the environmental component of the general plan update. When we come back to the commission for a formal recommendation to the city council, we'd be asking the commission to review this document, consider the adequacy of this document, and a determination that it, yes, indeed, does adequately address any significant environmental impacts identified to a level of insignificance, and that the council certify this as part of the adoption of the general plan.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Technology, is mitigated to insignificance the same as or different from mitigated to less than sufficient, or less than...
Yes, same, same.
Okay.
It's the same?
Actually, I have a couple of questions. Well, keep going, because I had a couple of questions about mitigation.
Sure.
Right. Go ahead.
So, historical resources. In the past, as I remember, other than artifacts, walls, da-da, 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 we've never really done that relative to a home. Like, hell, I'll tell you, built there. Full architectural review, hire somebody in the city, they do their thing, you had to put a 30-page report. You know, Winston Churchill did not have breakfast in this house. It wasn't a famous architect, whatever my bad. Is that what this is encompassing, or is it more of this, the artifacts that we have in church right now?
Like the burials ground, or something like that?
Yeah.
Yes.
But more importantly, just architecturally in town, you have some of these old mansions, many of them that aren't even here anymore, most of them that aren't even here anymore. But that's what I was wondering, is that where that's going, or what? Didn't seem like it.
No, so two, two answers to your question. First, the town of Atherton has made the policy determination that there are no historic buildings for consideration in this town. There is a historic inventory that categorizes potentially historic artifacts or structures. As it relates to the environmental document and the cultural resources analysis within the environmental document, it is, as Chair Lane was alluding to, and let me just flip there, focused more on archaeological resources versus historical buildings or structures. So there certainly could be potential, if a house is demolished and rebuilt and a basement is dug, that archaeological resources could be discovered. And so what these mitigation measures are saying is that if that happens, then this is the mitigation efforts and steps A, B, C, D, and E that you need to follow if that happens.
Which is very common in every other city.
Yeah.
Where, that's amazing that we don't have it until then.
Some sites, sites are mapped, too, to the level that they can be. They're usually pretty broadly mapped, and there are no, no known broadly mapped areas within the town of Atherton's jurisdiction. Many times, if, they're also kind of, they seem to be, at least in my experiences in other jurisdictions, along waterways and out along the sides of those.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. And there's even a reference to the fact that we, that the town chose enough to do it on their shore.
No, I know. I just wanted, not knowing what it was originally, I just wanted to make sure that, at least we all knew what it was.
Yeah, and there are some things in here that are sort of the spirit of Atherton elements, like the thing about, you know, the meandering streets and front, you know, sidewalks and things like that. So when people say, "Well, why, you know, why would you build a new place and not have this?" And then, there's a reason for the framing of it, the framework of it within this plan. So I, as I was reading this, I was doing two things. First of all, I was reading for what it said, and then I was putting that, what it said, on what we have as a town now, to see if it matched, you know, and see if that would create any issue with what we have existing. And I couldn't find anything, you know, that would be, that would be, I mean, it's more about the implementation of it, you know, like, does that tree go, go or not, or things like that. But it wasn't about whether or not trees are, you know, can be preserved, or whether or not, you know, the plot sizes are used for preserve. I think as you get into some of these secondary lot, secondary above places, there'll be a different chemistry of the town if that really were to catch on. Go ahead.
I had a couple of questions. Do you guys want to...
Go ahead.
So, on the, as, as, was there, right, oh, architect. Did we have adequate architect representation in the, kind of, the meetings at all, where any, does anybody come through and Jude, or Steve, or any of the normal suspects that came in and went, "We can't live with that," or everybody, I, I wouldn't think the changes we made were anything that would concern any of them. I mean, it seemed to me like most of them were pretty vanilla bit important.
Yeah, at the community workshop, for example, I believe there was two architects that were there of the 14 that I cited previously. We actually mailed a notice, probably should have all received one, to every single house in Atherton, notifying them of this project. We have it on the website. We've been posting it anywhere and everywhere that we can. So with that said, I haven't received any type of inquiry from any of our usual local architects or development firms inquiring at all.
And there's nothing in this that would really be a trigger for them to have either run it up, unless they thought something was missing.
I would rather know that they were there. And, or that they, I mean, you're right. You can spread this far and wide, but everybody gets busy and...
Go ahead.
I'm sure it's important, someone will tell me. I just don't want to have, I, I don't want it to create more work for you. Right? I don't, we, I think we've done a pretty good job clearing the way so that you guys can make decisions. The last thing we want to do is have something that changes, then they're, all of a sudden, mucks that all up again.
Yeah. Any other questions?
No.
I had a couple, there was an issue, and I brought up the fact that in the, in the agenda, it says there are six item elements, and in the plans office, there's seven, and that's the leftovers, so we'll correct that as a net. I was going to ask you, back here on the road street classification system, in that section, I started writing questions about, you know, we talked about the possibility of school traffic issues and peak commute pastimes and things like that. I didn't really see anything specific around that, and, did I miss that?
Are we in the general plan or the...
General plan.
Oh, okay.
Did I, oh, I switched too early.
Oh, that's okay.
No, I'll, I'll let you do the overview of the general plan.
Okay.
Yeah, let's do that. All right, any more questions on the environmental?
Say, Dan, and I, maybe a general plan question. I know it's been a big conversation. We're seeing it in the almanac. Peter...
Carpenter?
Carpenter. He's got, his discussion going on on emergency access and emergency egress coming out of Lindenwood, and I agree, we've been there for a while, and it's, there's ever a fire, those people are just, no pun intended, or pun intended, but you know what I'm saying? It's going to be, it's going to be, is that something that we would ever want to leave a place holder in here, or is it too vague already to do it? I just think there's something, that some solution has to happen down there, because that is going to be, I mean, that's, that's a problem waiting to happen, I think.
I don't think that the specifics of the topic that you just brought up would necessarily trigger a change in the environmental document. However, when we roll into the general plan, I certainly think that that's a topic that we would could be addressed, because this is a long-range planning document, and...
Yeah, and that's kind of where most of my questions are, anyway. So let's go, just go to the overview on that.
Okay.
Talk, 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 as we got into it.
Okay, so I won't get into what a general plan is. I think we've done that enough in our prior study sessions. But so the document that you see before you tonight, what it, what it has done, has taken your commentary and comments from the study sessions that you, when you evaluated each element by element, and integrated those changes into the subsequent elements. What it also has that you haven't seen is obviously a title page. It's got a table of contents, has some other formatting and page numbering changes. It has, at the end, a references and report preparers section, and packaged into one clean administrative draft version. So the text and the maps, again, within each of the elements, is what you saw at your study sessions, plus the feedback that staff received in an attempt to address it in terms of revisions. Just to highlight what those were, when we had discussion on the circulation element, I took some comments regarding the emergency operations plan and evacuations route, as well as the commission's annual review of the school's master plans, some traffic congestion and flow issues that you had brought up, and how they should be evaluated. So the attempted means of addressing those comments were the inclusion of two new policies that were added to the circulation element. I excerpted them in the staff report, but they have to do with the emergency evacuation routes that are prescribed in our emergency evacuation plan, but so that that text is also now within our general plan that specifically calls out those particular streets. Secondly, we added a policy in there that provides some specificity to our schools when they prepare their master plans, what those master plan contents should contain. It's a little bit broad as it reads now within the ordinance, so we put that as a circulation policy within the general plan as an attempt of addressing that, those comments from the commission. The other changes that were made based on commission feedback were integrated into our community safety element, and that had a little bit also to do with the emergency evacuation. So it has some cross-pollination there. We added some new texts regarding dam inundation. There was some discussion about the, up at the terminus of Walsh Road up there, so we talked to Cow Water and talked about how that emergency gate actually operates. And so we put some language in there based on feedback we received from them. We also added more specificity on our emergency, on the town's emergency operation plan, without, you know, reiterating that whole already adopted plan, but also having cross-reference within the general plan. Related to the emergency operations, we also added more text in background regarding the town's hazard mitigation strategies, or our hazard mitigation plan, and our policies regarding the evacuation and emergency siren. I think that was, gosh, if I'm remembering correctly, it was Commissioner Tanelli who had some questions. Well, how are we going to notify folks, and what can we do to make that better for public outreach and education? We put some discussion in there, too, on ADAPT, which was Atherton's disaster and preparedness team. It's a police department-sponsored community organization. There was also some discussion regarding criminal activity. We did not put any additional texts in the general plan. The community safety element really, in its intent and direction based on state law, has to do with natural and man-made type disasters. So the topic of criminal safety, we felt, would be best addressed with our police department and some of their enforcement and public safety policies and regulation documents. But we're happy to discuss that further if the commission would like to.
Talk to you later.
Other changes that were made to the circulation element, not based on the commission's direction, but on, there, on our townwide traffic study, if you recall, when you saw the circulation element, the town, I believe, was just underway in starting the preparation of the townwide traffic study, and long-range planning solutions study, it's also called. So since that time, the study has been completed. The revisions to the general plan that has come out of that final traffic study have to do with consistency in street classifications. The reason that that's important, and in street classifications, I back up just to give you a brief explanation of what that is. Every street has to have a label, and it's usually based on how much traffic it has. So, very quiet street down in Lindenwood, we would call a local street. Middlefield Road, Arterial Street, has much more traffic, much more cars flowing on it. We wanted to make sure that the general plan reflected consistency with the townwide traffic study plan in terms of how we're going to, what streets are going to be called what, because down the road, if the town ever wants to try and obtain some future state, federal, local funding to help implement some of those strategies in the traffic study, they will call to a general plan to make sure that those policies are consistent to support such implementation. So that's the reason why the street classifications may have been changed from our 1992 document. So things have changed since then, traffic-wise. The other piece of the general plan that I wanted to highlight that Chair Lane also had briefed on was, we do anticipate some more changes coming to some of the elements in terms of both background texts and policies, as it relates to another town effort that began after, you've already looked at all of the elements in your prior study sessions, and this was based on a state mandate for the town to adopt a green infrastructure plan, or GI work plan. And without getting into the nitty-gritty of what that is, it's a plan that the town has to adopt under their municipal regional permit for stormwater runoff, and how we're going to treat it in a more, call it, sustainable or green way. So the town has hired consultants who have began the preparation of such a work plan, and they recently were given copies of our administrative draft general plan, and were reviewing it, and kind of came up with some questions, comments, suggestions. Again, some... Again, similar to the traffic study where if they're gonna implement this GI work plan, we need to make sure that the general plan has policies that will be able to support those implementing measures. That GI plan is not yet finalized, it hasn't been adopted by the town yet. It has to be adopted by June of this year under state mandate, so it's gonna be happening soon. So when we come back to the commission and I'm targeting next month in May with your, with the formal request for consideration of adoption and recommendation to the council, I would anticipate more changes. I'm guessing within community safety, maybe some in the circulation depending on what those policies may look like possibly community safety as well.
Can we just get it in the red line?
Yes, I was just gonna say, yes.
I will.
From the past, then, the red line is possible.
So if, if the commission, what a suggested approach of the commission is favorable to this, any comments that I receive from you tonight, plus any additional comments that may come out of my discussions with the green infrastructure consultants and anything else that may come in from the time or to the time that we come back in May, I will redline in this version. It may get a little funky in terms of formatting, so we'll give you a clean and a redlined version but so that you'll be able to just zero in on those changes from this point forward.
That'll also come just look at consistency between the changes of what was there before.
So other than that, again, hoping that if there's any additional questions or comments or direction for further research or evaluation on any of the elements that the commission has, you can share those with me tonight and then we will be prepared to address them in a track change version when we come back to you in May.
I have something I'd like to comment on, at least open the topic.
Yep.
In the circulation element under congestion management, it says like everything else is a proposed new section. It talks about managing the congestion of traffic, I guess here in Atherton, our main streets spring to mind.
Page seventy-three.
Yeah, page, and then I'm looking at page seventy-five in particular.
Okay.
Where it starts talking about this Grand Boulevard idea.
Yes.
And the complete streets, streets thing. And it says they're gonna, yeah, they're gonna dedicate us a lane in each direction on the El Camino. Think about the congestion, it's already there. Today in the almanac, it said that Atherton's traffic is considered saturated congestion. So we're all aware of that, Middlefield Park is even worse. And here they're talking about taking out one, at least one, maybe two lanes. Do you know what that's gonna do to the traffic? Has anybody thought about it?
Particularly with all those, all these units are being built on El Camino, they're all gonna come on it.
Yeah, it's gonna get worse, not better, and they're gonna narrow the street for some bicycles and, my gosh, the average age in Atherton is such a people, I'm gonna wanna walk or ride a bicycle everywhere they go.
The only thing I can think is they're gonna make El Camino so miserable that people go to one-on-one and to wait.
Well, or they'll cut through on Middlefield or somewhere else, Austin Avenue maybe. I don't know, but I, I was shocked to read that they're even thinking of that and I just wonder what you folks who are more in knowledge of what's going on are thinking about it or saying or expecting or, is this gonna blow over or are we just gonna bow down and accept it? Has it been discussed in the prior quarters?
The, the Grand Boulevard initiative has been sort of on the regional table for probably.
I see that, at least ten years.
Yeah, I mean, a couple of decades.
Yeah, it's been, it's been talked about.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Is it just a feel-good thing that they're not gonna go ahead or are we really in trouble?
No, I'm actually getting some progress in terms of the design now compared to the past because I went to a couple meetings of it and it was, basically, the, the, the traffic study say that if you narrow the street, you have more trees and things like that, it slows down traffic, it's supposed to speed it up.
Say it would.
Yeah, and the idea that people, people are feeling like more, it's more like a local street, that's the theory on it. And, and the idea that it feels more connected top to bottom. So it'll be interesting to see because first of all, it could be really expensive. Second of all, it would probably be triggered also by more mass transit capability as a, as an offset to some of the constraint on the, on the driving. So, you know, that ties into one of the climate, the climate change, or the climate questions I had, which is around, we're talking about having reduced emissions and the target around it. The, the question I had is, is correlating the traffic. What percent of traffic that has a destination traffic? So if you go down Marsh and take the right and then take, take a left through here and watch the cars, they'll go straight through all the way up out to Woodside or whatever. I mean, that's, that's right through. Since, since the, the work that was done to minimize the traffic through the neighborhoods in the, in the Fair Oaks area, it hasn't picked back up, but I'm watching the traffic now. You cannot get out of the street, out, out the street here on Middlefield at a certain time of the day. You can't turn left, period. Just nothing bothers. So, so it later forces to have more stopping lights, stoplights, but if, there's no way we can hit our environmental targets with more traffic going through the city. So it's a question of, are we talking about all environment that goes in this, in the town or the part that we control?
I think we're really talking about both.
That's what, that's what I thought, which means that it's, it's impacted more by what we don't control than what we can. With three, with three people per acre, you know, it, you know, that's a low-end environment of that. Just, just sitting there, three people per acre this year. I couldn't idle my old car and log it off to make it worse. So, so the question is, how realistic is that goal compared to what we're dealing with in terms of the cross-traffic?
And related to that, I had a question about whether, and I may have missed it somewhere, or whether it would even appear in a document like this that we would have a goal of working with neighboring communities and towns and cities who, who might be generating the traffic or who are the destination for the traffic, like Facebook and whatnot, in terms of just coordinating information, impacts, sharing data, et cetera. Would that be something that we could include in, in this as, just so that we can, even if there's nothing that can be changed, at least know maybe ahead of time? What might be coming down the pike and then we would have some ability perhaps to mitigate, you know, Fort Atherton itself?
So to answer your question as it relates to the traffic and circulation-related component, without knowing the whole document memorized in my head, the traffic study, long-range planning solution document, that does indeed have reference to the need for collaboration with other neighboring and outside jurisdictions. It does identify that, yes, Atherton's not sourcing the problem, but Atherton must address the problem somehow. And then from the environmental piece, as it relates to a different document, the CAP or the Climate Action Plan, that too also acknowledges that it's a, well, in this case, global and that can trickle down to the local level and that there's a necessity for regional outside boundary collaboration in order to hit those in, in, in the Climate Action Plan, they're called greenhouse gas reduction measures, sort of like a mitigation measure but specific for reducing your carbon footprint. What can we do here in the town to help that regional problem? So, backing up, yes, we can put policy in here, which is what we tried to do to support those other more, call them direct implementing plans, such as the townwide traffic study and long-range planning solution document as well as our Climate Action Plan, which is an enforceable and implementable document. So if there's more, we can, we can certainly add more language that provides greater specificity, more background, really identifying that if Atherton's not the source, we're helping to still mitigate a problem that isn't directed or initiated from us.
Well, so here's what I would say in the general plan as opposed to those directed plans. If the general plan referenced the fact of rather than the solution for most of the time, right? So the fact of the matter is that a high percentage of traffic within Atherton is not Atherton-generated in the original origin and destination traffic. Now, something like that puts it on the table that if you guys wanna hold us to fifteen percent plan, then tell us how to get, how to affect this part of it, right? So, so what I'm looking at in that is an anchor point for us to have an argument saying, great, we're willing to, we're willing to do that, but let's, let's look where the problem comes from. And search, search into the root cause, even though we don't know if it's ninety percent of traffic at this point or eighty percent of traffic, but we do know it's a lot.
So in our general plan, that, that, I would call that a consequential, right? Technically, it's not, we're not creating, it's coming from outside source. I guess I never thought about it the way Eric's saying it. Because the town technically, whether it's our public works or maybe you guys, when, when, you know, the project at Stanford, right? All that stuff coming up and down, upcoming, all the stuff coming from Redwood City, right? And Redwood City's just a fruit big, beautiful big. You wait till you see the, the gray star that's coming in right at the dog park. That is massive object. But, you know, you start talking about that stuff, I guess what I'm trying to figure out, I also don't wanna hamstring this, where all of a sudden we're always the guy fighting. What I don't wanna do is we're always out with our gloves on, looking after everybody, but there is, I see what you're saying in terms of creating some leverage for the town with the general plan. And we're in the ancients, I've never seen it done that way, but maybe, maybe I just have been misreading it. I don't, I'm not saying it's right or wrong.
What I, what triggered the thinking for me was the fact that we give ourselves a fifteen percent, you know, environmental impact target, ten to fifty percent.
For the cap?
Yeah.
We were given a fifteen percent.
Right, so, so if you're gonna give, if, if we have a cap, ten to fifty percent, then, then I, then we could be able to say, okay, here's our three people per acre and they're down fifteen percent. Now, the fact that we're, we're registering a sixty percent increase, let me show you where it comes from. You know, and where this comes from is when, if you follow the traffic and do the meter on Middlefield, down to Fair Oaks, down to El Camino, down to wherever it goes, you'll see where that, where that's not complying.
No, no.
Right? And, and down Marsh, whatever, it's interesting, I drive regularly down Middlefield and, and ever since Palo Alto redid its streets, which were really a pain to use for, for outsiders, their traffic's dramatically down on Middlefield. I can drive down Middlefield like, like from the university all the way down to, to.
To Marketo.
To what?
To Marketo.
Well, beyond, even, even beyond Marketo, all the way down to, to whatever it is, or, or Expressway. And, and I can go for like a long time and never have any kind of significant traffic issues at all. And I used to be stopped all the way down and, and.
Or you think it's stuff that was down in the street or it's traffic signal coordination?
It's traffic signal coordination, I think, but also streets moved from one, one lane to two and narrowed down and made it, made it less so as a thoroughfare. You go to the, to Middle Park, it doubles to, to two lanes both directions and you go to, to Palo Alto and it's constrained. And what you watch is everybody leaving off Middlefield going left on Middlefield, right? And that's because of, right? So, so it just, it, there are things that we could do to make it less desirable to drive, travel through town. Putting, you know, putting more stoplights in on Middlefield, you know, so if you wanna go to Middlefield, there's only nine stoplights now, don't worry about it. So, so the, the question will be is, we have to, we have to know that we use the, the regional transportation too, but as long as imposition's been made on us in terms of specifications of improvements, we have to start saying, okay, for what we can directly control, we can change, we can improve it this much. And for what we can't directly control, how do you want us to help?
So is traffic calming, what you're trying to call traffic calming? So is traffic calming technically a general plan term or is it more a public works term?
Well, it's, traffic calming, if it's implemented, it's gonna be more of a public works term. Traffic calming is identified in the townwide traffic study. As I'm hearing this discussion, I think it, and maybe helpful if you'd like, in the, in the next round that we come back to you with, I can give you a more summarized specificity of the traffic study and kind of what it, what it says overarching and maybe dig into some of its recommendations and see, and we can evaluate that further too, to make sure that this document, this general plan document, specifically the circulation element, is adequately covering all of those implementation recommendations.
Well, let me give you an example. If they open that, if they open up this, this train station for weekdays sometime in the future because they electrify it and say, hey, that's, that's a good spot, that will not be a primarily Atherton-based use during the week. It'll be people that, that are feeling like it's, they're on the south end of Redwood City and it seems like a better place to get out than on the Redwood City Station. Or it's, it's too crowded to find this parking spot in Middle Park, so let's go down here. And then all the, all the access to this spot will be miserable access, alright? So, so there are, there are things that are sort of in place now that aren't really a factor, that are there to be affected. We talk about having this, having this open, open up, but when you look at the percent of individuals that would probably be from Atherton going out of the station on a weekly basis, at, at least initially before market changes, it wouldn't be that high. But it's, it would affect dramatically the life in this, this section of the town.
Absolutely.
So, so do we use Hexagon here for anything?
Um, I think we have, we have utilized their services as.
So Hexagon, we use them all the time, Hexagon's a traffic consultant for, they're, I, we pretty much exclusively use that for our large projects. Gary's great, I mean, if you, if you, this would be an interesting one. Again, all we're doing is making a recommendation to put some teeth in that would help the council go through this. I just wanna be careful that we're not picking a fight that all of a sudden backfires on us, but Hexagon might be a great one because I'm sure they're having these conversations up and down the peninsula.
But I would say that would be for the directed traffic plan, not for this. If we just put a seed or something in here saying, you know, something effective, you know, by the way, look, you know, and there's nothing else in there, but just so that you know. When I think of the general plan, I think of the things that are, there is a bunch of by the way statements in here. By the way, we like the abandoned streets. By the way, we definitely, we don't prefer sidewalks. By the way, these are all seeds. So when, so when somebody comes in and says, I have a reason for a sidewalk, we say, hmm, okay, well, tell me about that because that's in our general plan and then we become the reason for why it makes sense. It's all I know, community reality, and kids are gonna watch school or whatever it is, right? So what I, what I'm thinking of is, is on these traffic elements, the seeds of the, there's two things in this plan that provide the potential for the biggest change of the environment or the character of town to me. One is the traffic flows and, and two is the secondary units, alright? Those two anchor points for me are the two anchor points that, that run the biggest potential change to the nature of town. Now, if we want to, if we want to know, if we, if we're not sure how it's gonna play out, then we have to make sure the general plans are stasis. So my other question I had around, for example, the secondary units is, we have, we have, you know, we have a statement that will have five to eight a year, is that a goal or is that a gestimate? And if it's a goal and we don't hit the goal, then somebody come in and say, hey, by the way, you didn't hit your eight last year, so we gotta make it up this year.
That shouldn't really be in the general plan, should it?
That would be in, it should be in the housing element would be more appropriate if it's in here. In land use, maybe it's in land use.
I think it's in land use.
Yeah. I mean, it could be appropriate, and I mean, the thing with the, the land use ties back to a housing element, of course, because you can't develop housing if you don't have the land use to support it. But, do I correct me if I'm wrong, so far, I mean, the, the state mandates used to read as these regional housing, I don't wanna get into the housing element, the regional housing needs allocation, right? And so every jurisdiction is given X amount and Atherton participates in this regional effort where we go with all the other jurisdictions in San Mateo County and a lot of places will trade units. We don't because our allocation is usually relatively low. So we don't wanna give, or I mean, we don't wanna take just because of the way that the policies of this town are currently underway. And accessory dwelling units are really beyond housing, potential future housing at school sites. It's the way that Atherton meets our arena dedicated numbers.
Well, it's on page thirty-five.
Okay.
Right, so all I wanna, all of, and I, I understand, I understand where it's coming from and where it's being generated from. And all I, all I've seen is if you're in Sacramento going, boy, where can we, where can we solve this? can we solve this problem? If, well, let's see, there's a place down here that has three people per acre and they have this and have that and have that and they've got, they've got a good transportation source. And by the way, we're, we're looking at a law that would require high density homes near traffic and things.
Yes.
Right? So, all of a sudden, this changes things, right? And it's, and it's, what kind of, how strong a character of a town do you put on the map so that it's consideration for not doing it that way? Because if this law says that we want density in housing by, by train stations and bus stations, then that place right over here is a target for this area, right?
And that'll override anything.
Right.
We say we wanna do it, yeah.
Right, right, because now we have a secondary unit because of the stipulation required.
Yeah.
Right? So, so all, in, in, and I won't be here probably to see these things because it's like thirty years from now of thing, but it's a, somebody three years ago said, hey, let's protect the trees, you know, and they made a stand about the, of the nature of the town. So, anyway.
We should look ahead.
Right? So, it says, it says, the production of the secondary units, the town has reached five eight units, the town can therefore expect to produce an additional forty six units eight year, eight years, five, nine, five years, pretty much be affordable or come housing here. That is, that is such a statement on page thirty-five.
Oh.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's, this is a, this is the housing element.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. But, so, but that does not set up some things for the general plan too?
Um, so housing elements, so there's guidelines in which different elements of a general plan need to, need to have. And housing elements are even more specific.
Yeah.
So, it is part of the general plan.
Right.
Uh, and without having to be able to go back and look at the specificity of criteria that a housing element needs to have, I'm pretty sure we have to make a statement.
Yes, I, I know we do.
Yeah.
I absolutely know we do because I remember when we started talking through this, through this. So, I, I know we have to make a statement that puts it on the map for the number we want, all right?
How it's done.
Right.
How it's done and where.
Right. So, all I wanna make sure we understand is that sometime in the future, we may be held to that as a target.
How do, how does the state track us? Do we have to provide a, an update each year or a chapter?
I think it's every four, four or five years.
Yeah, okay, that sounds more like it.
Yeah, it's four years we started.
And they're pretty like, they come, they're, they're, because Atherton has joined this arena, this regional group, they, the people from HCD, the Housing Community Development, they'll actually do check-ins with the group to help.
Facilitate.
Facilitate, well, and make sure you're not going down this bad path because when you send, submit it to them formally, they can come back and say, this isn't right and you need this or you're missing that and ultimately you need to have it certified by your council. I mean, I don't know what the consequences are if you don't have a certified housing element, I.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm not saying take it out. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, no, no, we're going out, make sure we understand what we're going on record to do.
Yeah.
And know that someday, these numbers don't become random numbers. They become targets and they begin, they can, they become standards of evaluation.
Isn't it the case that you don't have a lot of, there's sort of a minimum you're expected to do?
Yeah.
Yes.
It is my understanding that that's sort of what we've always fallen.
Right.
Yes.
So, I wouldn't say that the policy has been to put us in a position that we will later have trouble getting up to. I think it's kind of, we need to do X, let's do X.
Okay.
For a lot of different reasons.
Right.
Talk community, cram a lot of housing in with stuff.
Well, also, from, from a sort of information standpoint, there, theoretically, it could be things outside of the funding process that have to do with incentivizing the schools to be more dormitory spectrum. So then we were behind and we said, hey, you know what, you, you were gonna have a three hundred thousand dollar bill for building that, but you know, how about two fifty, do it by June?
Yeah.
You know, so there could be some things that, that you're going to be needing a number. It's just, it's just, there's a number of things in this plan that as I see things going on in the state level, they're not considering the nature of the town, they're, they're considering the nature of the region.
Oh, county region.
Right. Yeah. And so consequently, you know, we're around the area.
A bank.
Right?
Of a bank.
Right. Okay, okay, that's it. I mean, that's all I had, there's, there's, there's one other thing in here that was, go ahead.
Just, um, before the conversation of housing, there was some discussion on circulation and traffic.
Yeah.
And so, wanted to go back to the circulation.
Do you want the gavel over there?
No, I, just so that I'm making sure that I hear the commission correctly and it sounded like there was perhaps some interest in making sure that we have appropriate goals, policies and objection, objectives, seeds in our plan related to the operation and maintenance of Atherton streets at our desired level of, um, appropriate.
Acceptability.
Yeah, acceptability. So, we do have, and if you get to the circulation element on page eighty-nine.
Mine's on seventy-five. Or is it a table or what is it?
Eighty-nine is a, is a, is sort of the individual policy item of factors.
Down at the bottom right hand is VI sir eighty-nine. We have a new goal proposed to achieve a high quality of roadway operation on all Atherton streets, pretty broad.
Yeah.
But, excuse me, right now, we just have, we have three supporting policies to try to address that goal. And these are the policies that if, for example, Redwood City comes in with the development and they circulate their environmental document to us in Atherton, we say, we have concerns with this component and that component of your project because we have circulation policy X, Y, and Z that says we want this and we find your project is inconsistent with that, help, help us out and, I mean, that's what we can do.
Yep.
So, if the commission feels there could be stronger policies as they relate to the roadway operations within town, we can look at going back, as I, as I mentioned before, the, the townwide traffic study and maybe extrapolating some more stronger language to support that or, I mean.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. I, you know, that would cover probably a good foundation. This, this is what you have right here is probably enough of a foundation to start so we don't take a fight, for example, for me anyway.
Okay.
That, that would be, that would be enough to be able to give you an anchor to start the conversation as long as we understand that, that behind that is the idea that we're trying to think in terms of what impact is that through traffic at the.
Well, let me add one, because you don't probably go through it because if you're down this way, you should see, maybe all were depending on where everybody lives, the Alameda and Atherton Avenue.
Yeah, yeah.
Morning, afternoon.
Oh, yeah.
That should absolutely be a stoplight or, or a roundabout or whatever people like. I'm, I'm not a fan of roundabouts, but there's your example.
Yeah.
But, you know, there's something there that needs to happen.
Yeah.
There's your example, though.
Yeah.
Ninety percent of those people do not live in town. God bless them, that's fine.
Right.
But they gotta get somehow back and forth and they don't really wanna go to El Camino or one-on-one or two-eighty or their final destination doesn't make them want to go that far out of their way.
Right.
But there's your example, though.
That's, that's, that's a good example.
Thank how broad, thank how broad this is to achieve a high quality of roadway operation on all Atherton streets, other than Atherton, on all the draw, it's a, by the speedway, along the stop bridge now and Selby and Tuscaloosa. But operationally, it's fine, but we get a ton of cut-throughs, a ton. But on that one, that one is a fiasco up there now. I don't know how you solve it. I know there's, to your point, I know there's been a bunch of conversations in the community about how we do this.
Yeah.
I just don't, that's why I was saying Hexagon earlier, those or you guys or whoever are the pros on that can come up with something that maybe gets you what you want because this is pretty broad.
Right.
Or like, like the next couple pages show you which, what's in our area, what's in local, what, you know?
Atherton Avenue and Alameda-Dalas-Pulcas intersection is definitely one of the intersections studied in the townwide traffic study.
Yeah, it's gotta be an F, especially at AMPM peak, easy, right? Especially going north from four-thirty to six-thirty P M. It's gotta be.
Yeah.
Middlefield, the Marsh, Enzalala too.
Yeah, I don't, I, I just don't know, but I certainly will discuss it with the public works director and look at the traffic study and see what specific recommendations, in this case, it's a different traffic and transportation firm that prepared the, the townwide traffic study, but Hexagon-like type people, they came up with, yeah, that was a hot, hot topic for the community when the townwide traffic study went out for public comment too.
But there's a, but there's your, there's your area, that thing is so solvable because you really don't have a ton of traffic on Atherton Avenue, you, you do, but nothing like that. But if you had a right turn, if you had a dedicated lane to turn right, you had a light that kept that going green most of the time in that AMPM peak, you'd move stuff through there so fast. I mean, not a lot of people sitting there idling and those people that are, have their homes right there, I mean.
Exactly.
Yeah, and that, that opens up the opportunity for funding in the state if they were saying, hey, we can reduce idling by twenty-five percent.
Air quality's a baby and, or even some of this stuff, sorry, this, this, this is like, you take the scan and this thing's gonna.
Right, so, you know, think about, think about that one, because I, I don't have a problem deepening that up a little bit, so, again, we're only, we're only at this point in the plan trying to set a foundation for our ability to make our statements from that point.
Yeah, right, right.
Does that make sense?
I honestly think since Paul's not here, we oughta take a vote on this.
I, I think that Paul, Paul gets the homework for the next meeting, he probably.
Exactly.
There's, there's one question I had too on, on page forty-five, forty, page forty-six of the housing element. I think it's forty-six of all of them, but it is in the housing element. And, and if this number is true, then I need to sell right now. It says the, the plan currently sells for over three point four million dollars per acre. Is that accurate?
Well, the housing element, if you're, we're not updating that and this was prepared in twenty-fourteen, so I can see where that.
Well, there was a mistake in the housing element that I brought up before that had to do with the dollars per acre. But I didn't, but I remember, I remember it was like this ridiculously high number like three mil, like three million dollars per acre. I mean, that seems extremely high to me. Doesn't that seem high to you for?
Three point four?
Yeah.
Depending, wow, are you doing one As, one Bs, you know, or one?
I'm just talking about no house on it, three point four million dollars with no house?
Easily, easily.
To be honest, it was like that.
Westside, it's, if there's no house on it, it's six to nine.
Really?
Easy.
Oh, wow, I'm at the wrong end of the town.
Yeah. I think.
I assume that's an average number based on, because I just, yeah, I don't, I don't think that's.
All right, good.
I mean, just, let's put this right, your order of Almond Drawl just came on with Tom Loungue, Almond Drawl, Selby, one acre, eight point five mil, they just took the house down right across from the Salzman's, the big.
Oh, yeah.
Where she had, used to decorate her gates for every holiday, that right there, so, boom, right across the street. It just came on eight point five.
Wow, okay, all right, and don't, don't bother.
Oh, Jeff, yeah, Jeff, the developer, Jeff just put his house on, one of his houses at the opposite corner of that one, nine mil acre, the big beautiful gates, those historic beautiful gates that are right there, one of the oldest states back in there, went all the way to Atherton Avenue, but I don't remember what the estate was been in. Anyway, so that, I, you're right, this, the statement's mostly right for it and, and not just in the dollars, it's probably an average, but also that it's something that's being taken down to start.
Okay. On the housing, on the housing element sixty-one, there's not, maybe that's the plan, it's maybe something for us to know. Do the secondary units get a, get a second address or not? And if, if they don't have a secondary address, is it accounted as the housing element?
Um, they do get a separate address.
And I think they get separate gas and.
They, they definitely have separate meters, yes.
Okay, good, I just didn't know because we talk about a lot of times for, as, as, you know, things for relatives and things like that, so I wasn't sure if they were always set up that way.
Yeah, even if they, if the folks come in and say, this is for my grandmother, we still count it as, as it has a potential.
Well, that, that means the in-house solutions.
But no separate parcel number though, just a separate.
No, no separate parcel.
Same parcel.
Correct.
Same parcel, but a different address, so it's like an A or B.
A to B, sometimes something like that.
All right. And then I had a question around.
Were we supposed to read this out?
By the way, we'll remind you, we'll remind you next time that you are here.
I was gonna ask you this, I was gonna ask on this, but all over again.
So, on page seventy-six, by the way, there's a reference to the Grand Boulevard and it's nineteen cities and things like that, so that's just a clarification, in case you weren't aware.
How serious they are about it, I forget, sounds powerful.
The last meeting I went to, it was pretty serious, but it was a year and a half or so ago, I was invited to it as a, all right, and the other, there's another question I had, we went through a lot of the traffic stuff, so I need to go down, there's, I have to run back here.
So, just to, to give you some comfort, many parks fighting the Grand Boulevard thing like crazy.
Oh, good.
I mean, well, they should. Well, so the Grand Boulevard, hopefully is to bring the dense as you can, get people out of their cars, make it so people don't get in their cars. It's, it's, I know, it sounds crazy, but that's what, that's why nineteen of these basically cities.
Well, I think it's clear they're trying to get people out of their cars.
So, but, and ours is the opposite because we can't do it any other way. So, everybody else is doing it, boom, and then we're, but we choose to live it. You know, that's, but there are impacts for sure.
Yeah, when I was over in Pleasant Hill, the planning question there and also in the county, there was a, a special district, I know it's what they call it, a retail district, for when the bar stations went in.
Yeah.
And the requirement was that people, that anybody building, they do condos right in the bar station was gonna induce community traffic and things like that. So, therefore, they, every unit, every building could only provide enough parking for one car per, per unit.
Yeah.
And now that meant is that cars were parked all the way through the neighborhood around the bar station.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of cars.
Yeah, of course.
You know, so it's like, it's like best laid plans.
Exactly.
We, we did this thing called Two Worlds, which was, which was housing above and retail on the bottom and everybody was supposed to live up there and go downstairs and work and what happened every morning was that everybody, the house would run right out and everybody in the place would ride there every morning, so. So, it's like, the, the rule of planning is, it works differently, it's kinda like raising children, it works differently than it does. Just as a, as a note, you know, I've seen this before and the Atherton Black Sparrow was on the list and I guess he's promoted himself beyond the offensive danger list.
Wow.
Atherton Black Sparrow is now surviving, and there are at least four in my backyard, so I know that that's.
Oh, right.
I've read this report before and he made the cut and now it's.
He made the sheet.
They made, they made the cut, they made the cut and now they're no longer on the danger list.
That's a good point.
I just wanted to highlight how well the Atherton Black Sparrow list is done. But I, I wish raccoons were on this list. That's my only, that's my, alright, anything, anything else?
Did, actually, I did have one question, on the, on the, um, on the school stuff, did, did anything change? 'Cause I know all of the schools, this is just what I know from what I hear at Sacred Heart, where there are already nuns, and, you know, retired folks that do live there, that, that Sacred Heart at some point is probably gonna come to you and say, we're having, we're, we're struggling trying to, to recruit good teachers, 'cause they can't live anywhere, and that's the point about it. So, I don't know if we should be making a hat on this, and I don't wanna give my opinion on what should happen in a general plan, but the circulation element certainly is helped by having people living, not in their cars every day coming. I don't think they're gonna go, hey, let's go change the height limitations, and hey, let's go love three or four hundred people on these things. I think it's, you know, whatever, but I know Melos, at least from what I've heard, is thinking the same thing. So, I don't know if we should do anything, or if you wanna reach out to them and say, hey, we're updating the general plan. Do you want us to do anything on this, or, or at least consider it?
So, we didn't add anything regarding this, for the directing, um, directed to the schools regarding housing.
Right.
Um, we added policy directed to the school regarding circulation as it relates to their master plan updates. Um, if we wanna put a policy in the general plan within the elements that we're updating, directed to the schools related to housing, I think it would probably be most, uh, make most sense to put, put it in the land use element, um, let me, actually, it's probably quicker if I put it this way.
I guess what I'm thinking ahead of this, we, we do all this work on this thing, and all of a sudden, the schools show up at the council meeting and say, hey, do you guys think about us in terms of, in the futures, when they probably haven't done a good job communicating that, the town anyway, or to you especially, or to you, so, might as well, we might as well reach out to them and say, by the way, here's what we're doing, is this something you guys want us to consider?
Exactly, I have the watch, by the way, you know, if there's a watch over there.
Oh, oh, things are real, there's a huge thing, you see.
Oh, yeah, oh, interesting, like, run right through it.
Church is the same way.
Many businesses have the same problem, getting people in, our own fire and police complain about the same.
Right?
Yeah.
There's no question.
So, we'll have to make sure we have some directed policy for the schools related to housing.
Yeah, they'd appreciate being asked, I'm sure.
So, we, we would put it in either way, or we'd say, yeah, that'd be interesting, that we'd talk about it, well...
Well, do you, you want us to outreach to all the schools to make sure that they're aware they're updating the general plan, or s, or s...
Just the privates, 'cause the public can do whatever they want anyway, so they're not, they can...
Clarify, yeah, of course, just the privates.
It would be with the three schools, and then, yeah, exactly, those, those, those can really have...
Technically, there's four schools, right, because there's three in one.
We didn't take the, yeah, and then, um...
Yeah, right, yeah, okay, well, how are the easiest way for you?
Yeah.
Alright.
Well, and you're trying, if you call Mike, it'll take you ten seconds.
Yeah, he's gonna be here in May anyway, especially for his master plan update, so, yeah.
Conca, Lane, or whoever.
We didn't ask for that, he was just to be a man, also.
Yes, I'm there, too.
He's the new Sandy. He's done great. They should, tiny little gout, a little bit.
Alright, anything else?
No, is there anything else you read that you wanna talk about tonight, or did you keep us here?
I just wanted you to know I read it.
That is very clear, thank you.
I didn't read it. You know, you'd have to go there.
So, I heard your reason.
No matter what you said.
I just wanted to go on right there, alright, so, uh, anything else that you need? You know, is it clear enough in the murkiness of all the conversation?
No, I think so, I have the direction.
That's great, really well done.
Yeah.
Really well done, really, really well done.
Are we done with the staff reports?
Uh, no, we're not there yet, uh, we're at, we're at commission reports.
Commission report.
Yeah, and so, uh, let's, so then, then we will bring this back, just to wrap this up, before we go to, uh, but, we'll bring this back, please. Do you want these back, or do you want us to hold on to them?
Actually, if you could please hold on to them.
Yeah, that's right, alright.
If there are elements that don't have changes as a result of the discussion that I've heard tonight, and then my subsequent conversations with the GI Work Plan consultants, I won't give you a hard copy of it.
Right.
Okay, um, and so you may just get excerpts, but...
Right, okay, that's fine, that was...
Maybe just try to save some paper, that's okay, but the...
As long as we can, as long as we can piece it together and lay it out, yeah, okay, alright, that's good. Alright, so now let's go to the commission's report, um, I've got something real quick. I, I did go to the Atherton Newtown Center, just because I, I, I didn't think I was gonna be able to go to it, but I, I got there and took a bunch of pictures, and, uh, so you...
Was there a lot of people there?
There were, uh, there were, there were a pretty good number of people there, um, there were probably, what, like, uh...
Hundred thirty-seven, yeah.
I was gonna say a hundred fifty, yeah, that, that, that actually, that actually signed in, you know, so, um, but it was, uh, so, just to give you a, a sense of the scale of it, um...
So, have your drone fly over?
Uh, no, I, uh, I, I didn't even read myself, it's, darn it, uh, but it was like, it was like this, so, yeah, so, like, it's like this, alright. And then, and so, and there were people over here behind you, too, that, and there were people against the wall, because it was a, it was a hunting shade. It was eighty-eight degrees, you saw when it started, and, and so, and then they had, they had speech, speeches by, um, three of the council members, uh, and the librarian, one of the librarian representatives, and, uh, there was, there were several sort of, uh, 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 awards given from city senators and someone congratulating the other, on the, on the...
How long did it last?
Uh, it lasted like, probably around forty-five minutes, and then went to digging and things like that, so then there's also the, they also did a, a, what a, a token, uh, it's one of those things where if, if they see themselves in these hats, they'll say, I really don't know where the hat ever been. But it, but it, they had a big pile of dirt there with a bunch of, a bunch of shovels, and they were all, they were all, they were taking a shot, and somebody flipping the, flipping the shovel, so, you know, it was, it was a groundbreaking, and I, I, when I walked up, and there was this backhoe there, I said, man, this is gonna be a big backdrop, but they didn't, they didn't use the ground for that, it'd be backdrop. Anyway, it was a good, it was a good event, it was, it was, uh, it, it was, and it was a really cool thing, there was a little, there was like a dollar thing that was commemorative, and I had it in my pocket, and I went out of the car and pulled my keys out, and I think it dropped on me, and so I was just gonna show it to you, but I don't have it, but there, there was a nice little, uh, uh, appreciation for the donors that initiated the funding, and the whole thing, and then also, um, you know, Bill, and Greg, and Elizabeth all spoke, and Sandy Robinson from Atherton now, and Steve Golder from the, the CAC, and then Jim Saunders from the library, and then the director from Amara Star, who's, uh, and, you know, he was very, he was very... He's been with the capital, he gave out, like, he was, he was, he did for a long time, and I, I enjoyed it, but he's, um, uh, anyway, so it was good, it's a good event. And, and it was, and it was one of those things where you go, like, oh, they're gonna, they're gonna have an event, and, but it was, it was good to sort of stop and say, you know, Elizabeth has been working on this for fifteen years, or somebody else, and it was, it was, it was a real thing, because it was, there were so many failures of even getting off the ground, which they had wrong, and it actually, it actually happened, so it was a good thing.
Very polarizing.
Yeah, yeah, alright, good, that's all I have to say, any other things I can change?
So, um, some of my homies that live on Almond Drawl, and they see me have one, know what's going on with this, that forty-six Almond Drawl's building, and I wonder why, I mean, maybe the, and maybe the give here from the town is to say, look, why don't you just screen it with laurels, big, 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 big laurels in the front, that no one has to look at the, the duck back there, I, if they're, if you guys want to see, but it looks terrible. And I don't know why they're still...
It's four years later or something.
Well, that's what I'm saying, forty-six Almond Drawl.
Yeah, they've, I know they have had a series of fines because they've had to extend their...
I would, I would say that we need to...
We are enforcing those title limits now, as of a couple years ago.
I think, I hope they're, they're, because I don't get it, they've gotta be paying in fines way beyond it. I, at last, we heard that there have been two that they've been got done, three, they, and it's been, uh, screened, and, 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 they should, you know, it's, hardship, or whatever, but if you can check, it's, it looks like, dude, um, and then, actually ironically, to one of your Nancy's prior points, there is a house on one of those R-one A lots, uh, Forrest, anybody know Forrest? He's a, he's a dad, you know, and husband, they, they have a family over in that, that area right off Almond Drawl, eighty-eight Park Street is one of the little streets back there, there's, do you know the one? There's a modern home, really high walls, these were a lot of your questions that you asked, and when we were going through all these, drive by and take a look sometime, Forrest lives right next to it, so every time I see him on his bike up and down Almond Drawl, he asks me about it. He's like, have you been over to see it? I went over the other day, it looks like it is on the street, and I was just trying to see it.
I know the house, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's crazy how big this thing is, well, he's worried that the entire neighborhood's gonna do it now, so if, not that we need to do anything here or anywhere else, but...
It's an R-one B.
Or R-one B, yeah.
A bit of history with that one, yeah, unique, and the answer would be no.
No what?
No, can't, well, first of all, there's not corner lots that have that much elongated front edge or, you know, two streets close, as that particular property, um, and there was some sidewall related.
Yeah.
Oh, that one, yeah.
Very front, so...
Oh, that one, and the lawyer was about that one.
You can't, you gotta hit, uh, the hunter out there, you go look at that thing, and it's gonna think, how, how did that happen? So, I just think it's, as long as that's just a unique circumstance, I know they've got a lot of little corners there, I don't know if they're all that elongated, or if they're more square, but I did go look at it.
There's the, well, yeah, there's the property line delineation along frontages, but there's also, there was some issues with their sidewall heights, and their sidewalls facing, uh, park right there, that's the long face, um, and we're trying to mitigate it after the fact.
Yes.
Yeah, my understanding is there was gonna be a lot of screening and thoughtfulness, 'cause I know the neighbor across the street was not excited.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I've met with those neighbors several times.
And there's a really odd house kitty-corner to them.
Oh, yeah, in that little...
On that little, yeah, it's the weirdest thing, you gotta go take a look.
Over there, there you go, right.
I, I have no idea how accurate that is.
This is off of Almond Drawl?
Yes, we go Almond Drawl and make that first left, and kinda get lost back in there.
The little loft, huh?
Yeah, 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 and if you go back there, you can't miss it, one, you can't miss it, but also, look across the street, and that one is a beauty, I don't, I have no idea, it looks like a treehouse.
Gosh.
Yeah, so, but that's been a, I, I imagine.
And I have one more, I have one more item, too, that was the, obviously, work they're doing on Middlefield, uh, piping, I, I just, I'm watching, I'm watching the, the infill on the dig, and I mentioned to you about the, about the dent that they're putting in, the...
Oh, right.
Yeah, so, I'm watching it all the way down the street, and so what they're doing is they're, they're rehaving over the top, and they're putting, they're, they're not, they're either saving block top, or they're thinking it's gonna be fine, but it's putting a, you know, a divot, it, it, it's like a reverse speed bump every time you go into one of those streets. And seen us that way, that's...
Well, they're, they, on all that, they all said that they should overfill the, so, so it's, it's clearly they're just trying to stay up.
And, and, uh, I've been watching that down the, the block earlier, and I've seen it, and it's, and there's, there's like a sagging point around the corner, some people, they're tired, they go down. So, it's just not, it's just not being done with the idea that, you know, we're gonna return it to what it was.
Right.
Yeah, you did, I'm sorry, and, um, I need to talk to the Public Works Director.
Yeah, that's for Public Works, that's not, that's...
Yeah, I'd be happy to have the conversation and get you the answer.
I just, I just, I just know that, like, I know that somewhere along the line it was approved, and I think that it's approved, and it's done well, and it's not being done.
Oh, did we prove it?
No.
Of, it got true.
Well, somebody in the city knew it was happening.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They're doing the work, they're contracted, I mean, they're contracted out, then it, there are minimum standards.
I think that's that new five G, or whatever that is, isn't it?
No, that's a gas line.
Oh, it's gas?
No, it's a gas, I asked them, 'cause I thought it was a new five G, too, but it was a gas line, and they're replacing the, like, the whole line all the way down. And they're knocking down trees, and were appropriate to do it, too, they took down four trees, that's all.
Initiating.
Yeah, alright, and then we got the staff report?
Uh, just, we will have a meet, we will be having a meeting in May.
Oh, we will?
Yes, we will, so...
Are we on the general plan?
We ha, we have two things so far, well, we have our general plan, and then we will have Sacred Heart School's master plan update at this point.
Alright, we gotta ask them about the, yeah, that'll be a handy thing to know, alright, anything else?
No.
Alright, I need a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Move, seconded, well, that was pretty quick.